Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for being here and thank you for showing up. Welcome to our regular meeting of April 14th. For the record, it is 1:07. If you'll call roll, please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez wanted us to dial him in to participate.
Okay.
He indicated he was gonna listen for most of the meeting, but to vote, wanted to be on the roll call.
You can hear us okay? Cheers, okay.
Roll call. We just had roll call, Councilman Gonzalez, he is on the line, we'll note that. Thank you, Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm here.
Okay. We have the Pledge of Allegiance, Chief, if you'd lead us in that, Police Chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just stay main standing, you know, we have a moment of silence for those in our community and families in our community and those suffering from medical issues that they will be resolved. Approval of the agenda, councilors?
Mayor and council, I would ask that item A and B on the consent agenda be removed today. And it's not that I'm not in support, I really am in support, but I feel like there's elements of the public that need to also be included in on this.
And, Councilor, we can wait to, because there is a presentation on both of those items, we can wait till right before the consent agenda. If those two things don't meet that, then we can pull them off at that time.
Well, we can listen to that, I don't believe I'm gonna change my mind, but I also need a little bit of guidance here, being a new council member still. I really want to get this bound, I don't want to cause a problem for the band, that's gonna be on the 4th of July either, so any guidance from any of you is appreciated.
Okay.
But we can listen to the presentations.
Let's just put them on the regular calendar.
Okay, we'll just hear those two individual items then.
Right.
A and B, as we'll pull them off the consent agenda. Any other thing on the approval of the agenda, councils, the council?
Moved to approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, we have a second to that?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go to the approval of minutes, April 28th, 2014, Joint Town/County Meeting. Council?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion to approve, we have a second to that? We have a second by Councilor Gonzalez, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Okay, so the March 10th, 2015, regular meeting minutes, council?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to March 24th, 2015, workshop meeting minutes?
Moved to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
March 26th, 2015, special meeting minutes, Councilor?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
So, next we go to our awards and remissions, and we have a retirement acknowledgement, and I want to turn this over to our HR Director, because I don't want to cry because she's leaving us. I mean, I put a rope around her or something, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to call Loretta and Naya up to the podium, please. The mayor and town council of the Town of Taos are pleased to proclaim the retirement of Loretta and Naya, having faithfully discharged the duties and responsibilities as facility services specialist and in and for the Town of Taos for over 23 and a half years, and having met the prescribed requirements for retirement from the Public Employees Retirement Association. On behalf of the citizens of this community, we proclaim April 1st, 2015 as Loretta and Naya Day and her official date of retirement from the Town of Taos. Our sincere congratulations and we wish you the best on your retirement.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Finally, yes.
This is her second statement.
You don't want to, you don't want to address?
Say a few words.
Say a few words?
Thank you for everything that's been a nice 25 years, 30 years, 40 years. Like when I left, came back, left, came back, and I don't think you're gonna see me again.
We won't see you on the volleyball court or anything?
Yeah, you'll see me cruising around.
Oh, thank you, thank you. So we have our Employee of the Month?
Yes. I'd like to call Officer Henry Sanchez up.
Yes.
So, the employee recognition team has selected Officer Henry Sanchez as April's Employee of the Month. Officer Sanchez works as the School Resource Officer for all the Taos Schools, charter schools, and he serves as a liaison between the Town of Taos, the students, and Taos PD. This recognition is for Officer Henry going above and beyond, and we'd like to present you with this plaque. And thank you for all of your hard work. We
life.
And if you'd like to address us, please.
also like to present you with a paid annual day off, as well as a gift certificate.
Well, it's just hard to believe I have 17 years of doing this. Hearing that is
Thank you.
wow. Really dates me.
A few words, Officer?
I don't know, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate all you do.
Best job in the world.
And we would also like to ask Renee Roberts to come up to the stage.
Thank you. So, we have introductions of our new, couple of new employees?
So, at this time, I'd like to call Louis Feinberg up to the stage. Renee Roberts is our Director of Marketing and Tourism. She began work on March 16th, and she also has a little over 17 years' experience in public relations and marketing, Louis is our new Planning Community and Economic Development Director. His first and we'd also like to welcome her to the Town of Taos staff. day was April 6th, and he has a little over 17 years in planning and community development,
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Councilman Gonzalez, when they passed by, they did put their hand out to shake
sorry, I'm a little nervous, guys, background, and we'd just like to welcome him to the Town of Taos.
If you'd like. your hand, just so you know.
Thank you, Mayor, I should give the video stream delay.
Okay. We'll go on, our employee recognition team update.
From your whole beginning of your agenda. Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers, manager. I'm the chairperson for the employee recognition team, just came to give you guys a little bit of an update on what we've been doing. The team was formed August of 2014, and we have implemented a Employee of the Month, which obviously we've been presenting at the councils, council meetings. Our team consists of 12 members, plus the mayor, Rick also attends our meetings, and we've held a few fundraisers, raffles, we've helped out with the Dr. Seuss Birthday Event, and we have a list of other fundraisers that we'd like to go ahead and proceed with. The fundraising helps fund appreciation awards for all of the employees. We're looking at doing future awards for Team of the Quarter, as well as continuing with the Employee of the Month. And in June, we would like to hold an appreciation day for all the employees. We're looking at possibly a Friday. We've kind of mentioned it to the manager and asked for administrative leave for the employees. They will, we will hold this at Kit Carson Park. We will have a sign-in sheet for all of the employees to come in. We will have a cookout and provide different activities, tug-of-war, a dunk tank, just different pie-throwing contests, just different things to kind of bring our Town of Taos family together. So, we're mentioning this now, so we would love to have you guys attend this. So, once we get a finalized date, I will make sure that I send you guys each a, an email, probably call you and formally invite you to this, that way you guys can put it on your schedules, being that you guys are very busy.
When was that date?
We're looking at June, either June 12th or June 19th.
Tamara, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. You know, I think this is one of them things where employees, you know, we can really show that we care about our employees and give them that opportunity to actually bond together, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to thank Tamara for stepping up to the plate and accepting the role as acting HR Director. Floyd and I have worked with her for over a year now, and we've been impressed, really, with how she's handled the office and confidentiality, legal issues, benefits, and I am hoping that she will at some point here, we have to advertise the job, but accept the permanent position, because I think she's gonna do a fantastic job.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
And I'd also like to recognize Julie Scancy in the back, who has stepped forward and agreed to serve as our building official while we've had that opening there. And though she is unwilling to take that job on a permanent basis, it's allowed us to have no interruption in services while we seek a long-term solution with some of our other government partners.
Thank you, Julie. So, we'll go on to the presentations, Taos Plaza Live, presentation by Susan Caddy.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mr. Bellis, Mr. Mayor, it's nice to be here today. The Taos County Chamber of Commerce would like permission from the Town of Taos and support from the Town of Taos for the 2015 Taos Plaza Live season. This year, we did have a wonderful listening committee. Thank you, Ms. Cantu and Mr. Gonzalez, for participating in that. We had about nine, 10 people, no, actually it was 12 people throughout the community to help us select the bands for Taos Plaza Live. We also understand, Mr. Mayor, that you've agreed to open the season with a proclamation about the milestones?
Yes.
Thank you. We can work out those details as we get closer. This year, we have a special opportunity from the 531st Air Force Band. They contacted me a couple months ago and said, "Do you have any time on the 5th, 6th, or 7th of July that we could play in house?" And we have a very small window, but Sunday afternoon, the 5th of July, following the 4th and all the festivities, we thought would be a fantastic time. I've chatted with some of the representatives from the veterans community. They would be interested in helping also provide during that time a salute to the troops, probably a presentation of colors and maybe a couple speeches. And through the veterans groups, we may also have access to Grupo Mascau to play on Taos Plaza during that afternoon. So that agenda item, oh, and I lost my agenda, to, for consent of Taos Plaza Live, the way that reads, it doesn't include any note of alcohol being served on the plaza. We did recently have a member come to us and ask if they could do a beer garden during Taos Plaza Live. So, I understand that that alcohol component may need to be delayed, further discussed, checked in with other people, and as I say, it's not in the language of your consent item on the agenda. So I'm hoping that we can have consent to do Taos Plaza Live September, or I'm sorry, May 28th through September 3rd, with the exclusion of July 16th, but the addition of July 5th, and then address that beer garden scenario down the road. You have any questions on?
Councilman Peralta?
Mayor, are you looking at any closure of the plaza during Taos Plaza Live or not?
Not during Taos Plaza Live Thursday evenings. I did request, and I'm sorry, I think you all probably got this included, the information included in your agendas. For that Sunday afternoon, July 5th, we thought it might be wise if we could close South Taos Plaza, or Plaza South and Plaza West, so that we could have some additional pedestrian area. But that was the only, under the Taos Plaza Live scenario, that we would request closure of those two streets of the plaza on that one Sunday afternoon.
South and west or southeast?
So that's the reason I was asking.
South and east, I'm sorry, south and east.
Okay.
Sorry. The other west.
Mr. Mayor, just if you're going to pursue the alcohol option, one of the things in our research we came across is that the Gorge Barn Grill, their liquor license actually extends to that sidewalk and patio area below the balcony, so that in fact, you would not need to come back to the council if they exercised their option, which probably could be done with a picnic license.
Okay, so, the member who brought that to us is not the Gorge Barn Grill?
Okay.
So we could perhaps put the two together?
Councilman Peralta?
The only thing that would have to happen there, I believe, because it would be in the public area, they would have to fence it off anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
Even though they have the ability to do that, but I think probably the best thing to do if you wanted to have something like that is just put out an RFP for proposals, because I think there would have to be a little bit of something coming back to the town, except for the gorge. If it's on their property, they don't have to, but anybody else would have to pay us rental for the use of space for the beer garden.
So that would be a Town of Taos issue, not a chamber issue?
Correct.
All right, so...
So if you're proposing to have a beer garden, then you would request the Town of Taos to put out an RFP for, and to then license that beer garden. So we would have to determine, along with the alcohol division, as to what parameters we have to put in together. It's just similar to what we do when we have Solar Fest and they have their beer garden there, and we have to go through certain things because it is open to the public, and there have to be restrictions as to how it's served, so that you don't have people carrying around alcohol all through the park or around the town.
Right, we certainly understand that. And, I'm sorry, we had understood that that was under the alcohol gaming state licensing of the picnic permit?
It's both. We have to approve the picnic as well. So we have to ensure that we're, our liability is covered besides that of the state.
Okay. So for purpose of this presentation, I would say, let's strike any reference to a beer garden that the chamber would have in coordination with Taos Plaza Live, and that that would be a separate issue brought forth under a separate everything.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, council, on her presentation? And then we'll...
No, just, Mr. Mayor, I think that as we get to item A, 10A, that we add to that the closure for the Sunday, the 5th, as indicated, so that we can get that approved as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Peralta, I mean, Councilman Hahn?
That's a compliment, I'll take it.
Susan, have you all checked in with Chief Weaver and collaborated with him?
We haven't done that yet.
Waiting for approval first, but then you will be.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here he comes now, speak of the devil. It's too late, we were talking about you, but we won't talk about it now. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. And we will be happy to sit down with the DRC Committee and make sure that everything is followed to their liking.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else on this presentation? Not, then we'll go to item B, Taste of Taos, presentation by Susan?
Thank you. So the Taste of Taos would be a new event, and we don't want it confused with a Toast of Taos, which is a wine tasting and golf event that's held at the country club. This would be an on-the-plaza, Sunday afternoon, October 11 event, where we would have booths from hopefully 25 to 35 restaurants. And again, it looks like we will have to address an alcohol RFP separately for that issue, and we can have our people who are interested in doing that help us get that together and put that out. But the Taste of Taos event would be to bring all of our restaurants and eateries and food purveyors, specialty food purveyors, to the plaza, offer, and we're not sure how this is going to be designed, again, we're going to await permission to do it before we invest a lot in developing exactly how it will be done. But have the plaza outfitted with event tents, tables and chairs, and then the booths, and have people purchase a token or a ticket at a centralized location, and then use those tokens or tickets to buy food tastings from the vendors. Fashioned similar to Taste of Durango, Taste of Denver, you've probably been to some of those events around the country. And again, we have had an inquiry about doing winery, wine tastings, beer tastings, microbrew tastings, and it sounds like that would need to be handled under a separate issue to be held on that same day.
And this is an event on a Sunday, and from what time to what time you have?
We're thinking like noon to 5:00, it might be 1:00 to 5:00, it might be noon to 4:00. We'd have to narrow that down and see what the vendors would want to do. We chose Sunday afternoon, it is a holiday Columbus Day weekend, so we thought we'd be in the center of the three-day weekend. We also didn't want to impose any hardship on other plaza events, such as the farmer's market. One of the reasons this had come up was to actually engage and maybe partner with some of the farmer's market vendors and some of the chefs, and see if we can't celebrate a Taos harvest. It is also, you know, extending that fall season for, you know, with events, the weekend, or two weekends prior to that is the balloon fiesta. It is the time that people come to Taos to see the colors. It'd be nice to have an event for them to go to that would showcase our restaurants and food purveyors.
Okay. Anything else, council, on this item? Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I was just wondering how the plaza was the chosen venue for this event?
The original member who brought it to the chamber asked for it to be on the plaza and said he, you know, he wanted to bring more events onto the plaza at a time when there were few. And this mid-October timeframe is one that there aren't a lot of things happening there.
The plaza will not be closed for this event, correct?
Well, if we had an alcohol and picnic permit for tasting of wine, beer, microbrews, whatever, then we were going to ask for a closure, a complete closure, actually, of the plaza, hoping to, you know, have it more like it would be for the farmer's market, so that there's plenty of pedestrian area. If we set up large event tents, you know, we want to have enough open space as well. For this event, we did speak with the Gorge Barn Grill, the Alley Cantina, Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory, all of who are on the plaza, and they all agreed to a soft yes. You know, if we put this on, they'll probably join us and have a booth and do tastings. We did have 10 chamber members who were excited about doing this, and we would solicit additional members, of course, to fill those booths on the plaza.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I believe if you have a tasting, it's a little different than having a garden. So, because of the servings are so small that they're required to do, that you don't have to have as much, you know, because like Bernalio used to have, that last year was the last year they're gonna have it, but they did have a wine festival tasting, and they didn't have to have the closures like we've had to have with gardens where you're serving full drinks. So, there's a little difference on that, but I would think that in order to do this right, you would need a full closure of the plaza, and then you can put some security on the streets, going in and out, the alleyways going in and out of the plaza, but...
And we do know that...
Fully contained then.
Yeah, there are restrictions, and that those tastings would probably need to be restricted into a specific area as well, and not, again, people following all of the laws and regulations for alcohol serving.
Because most of those tastings do have food served as well, so I think it's a good combination.
so that there's plenty of pedestrian area. If we set up large event tents, you know, we want to have enough open space as well. For this event, we did speak with the Gorge Barn Grill, the Alley Cantina, Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory, all of who are on the plaza, and they all agreed to a soft yes. You know, if we put this on, they'll probably join us and have a booth and do tastings. We did have 10 Chamber members who were excited about doing this, and we would solicit additional members, of course, to fill those booths on the plaza.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I believe if you have a tasting, it's a little different than having a garden, so because of the servings are so small that they're required to do, that you don't have to have as much, you know, because like Bernalio used to have, that last year was the last year they're going to have it, but they did have a wine festival tasting, and they didn't have to have the closures like we've had to have with gardens where you're serving full drinks, so there's a little difference on that, but I would think that in order to do this right, you would need a full closure of the plaza, and then you can put some security on the streets, going in and out, the alleyways, going in and out of the plaza, but...
And we do know that...
Fully contained then.
Yeah, there are restrictions, and that those tastings would probably need to be restricted into a specific area as well, and not, again, people following all of the laws and regulations for alcohol serving.
Because most of those tastings do have food served as well, so I think it's a good combination.
Yeah.
So Susan, so when item B comes to us, basically we're just asking for the use of the plaza for the Taste of Taos, at this point, there's no alcohol or beer garden that we'd approve because we don't know anything about that, correct?
Correct. I think that that is a separate issue, and it probably needs to be set up and addressed by the fully licensed alcohol server who can apply for the picnic license and knows all the regulations more than we do, so we probably have to partner with one of our members who would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all very much.
Renee, you have anything to add to this?
No, I do not.
Oh, I'm sorry, talking... Renee Lucero Harvick, I'm sorry.
I'm here. Councilmembers, I was just telling the attorney that we do have a resolution in place that addresses special dispenser permits, so we should probably look at it, but I know in the resolution, it does discuss the beer garden area cannot have more than 500 people, and if it does, then it needs council approval, but it can come to council if that's your wish, but up to 500, it's usually done administratively, which we just did for the Mother's Day celebration, so...
Okay.
Okay, and I do have a comment on that. The reason I asked for these to be taken off is because, especially for the closing, a full closing of the plaza when the farmer's market is on a Saturday, the element that we're leaving out are the merchants themselves who have already lost their Saturdays throughout the summer, and then on this particular weekend, we're asking to them for a Saturday and a Sunday. I just really would like them to voice their opinion here and not be left out. It's really important to them and to me.
Okay. We would ask for sort of a quick, as quickly as it can be done, answer on that so that we can plan appropriately. The Chamber does start its planning for events a good six to eight months in advance, and so we're sort of at that place for October, and whatever we can do to help facilitate that, we'd be happy to do.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll take these on an individual item.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So next we'll go on to Citizens Forum. Citizens wishing to speak have the opportunity to do so for five minutes. No action will be taken. Mr. Conrad?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, so today we're going to do something a little bit different. Normally this forum here is used to throw spitballs at you, but actually, we're going to use this to actually recognize one of you up there naming Mr. Bellis. So today is Mr. Bellis's birthday, and this, today, several years ago, I'm not going to say how many years ago, he came into being, so we're going to put a little candle here and sing him a little song. So we're actually going to ask the fire chiefs to kind of look away since we have a live fire going on here, and maybe ask for a little forgiveness.
Just have them come up with it.
Fire extinguisher?
Fire extinguisher. Place them as a guard.
Again, I'd like to thank our manager, who's done a great job here for us, and wish him the rest of his great days, having a great, happy birthday.
There'll be cake in the back. If you guys wish to partake, they'll serve it up and you can get some pieces distributed. You had your cookie for lunch, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilors.
Thank you. Okay, we are under Citizens Forum. Anybody else that'd like to speak? Right here, yes.
Sorry, I'm nervous, I'm a little prepared. I only heard about this on...
And your name for the record?
My name is Eric Mills. I was just wanting to start a petition in Taos about banning the little liquor bottles that are sold, because there's thousands of them all over the roads. I picked up maybe five or six huge kitchen bags within a mile of Kit Carson, and I feel like people use them to drink and drive. They're on the highway, so people aren't walking there, they're driving and throwing them out of the window, and I just wanted to know who I needed to talk to to maybe start a petition.
And before you do that, and I agree with you, but before you do that, I'd just give you some advice to talk to Santa Fe County or the town of Santa Fe before you move forward with it, because right now there's a lawsuit in place, and there is verbiage in the, we can't, we don't have the authority as a municipality to tell how alcohol is distributed, so you might want to visit that before you get the process started so that you're not doing it in vain.
Yeah, that's why I came here today.
But yeah, but I would recommend you do that, and then if it's something that you can move forward with, then please bring it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Just a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, you also may want to check with the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, they've already got a petition going, which they brought to the county commission, and the reason it hasn't come back before the Council, even though they've made us aware of it, is they are, and I think the article is actually online in the Taos News...
Okay, I'm kind of new to Taos, and that's just one of the things I like to clean up the roads here, and that's one thing I've noticed, is that they pollute everything, these little liquor bottles.
I think everybody's just waiting to see how that lawsuit turns out.
Okay.
And we agree, I think myself and Councilman Cantu were on several of these road cleanups, and we did pick up a number of those miniature bottles.
Yeah, I'm actually collecting them, I just want to, so I'm going to collect a mountain of them and just to show people, but they're everywhere. But anyway, okay, I didn't know where to start, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Appreciate it. Next. Please.
Can you get me on-camera close-up?
Not for me, thank you. Thank you.
That's why you don't eat lunch before a birthday. Thank you.
Watch out.
A lot of people.
Chief?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Just your name for the records, both of you, just formalities.
My name is David Meeks, and this is Meg Greenwood. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and Manager Bellis, I'm here to talk about having more hanging flower baskets, and there's a few areas that have places on the lampposts that can support them, and so I'll read what I wrote. It's a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but this is what I, for the record, wrote. "It turns out that in the 1960s, activists who chanted 'Flower Power' were on to something important in more ways than they probably knew. Flowers, just like peace, are good for our mental health. Research consistently links flowers and plants, but they haven't been mentioned in many protest slogans, with well-being. Park and Mattson in 2008 confirmed what visitors to sick people have known intuitively forever. They found that patients in hospital rooms brightened with flowers and potted plants needed less post-operative pain medication, had lower systolic blood pressure and pulse rates, and were less anxious and tired, and generally were in a more positive psychological state than patients in rooms without plants. Our downtown isn't a hospital room, but if flowers and plants do so many good things for hospital patients, they may make our day at least a little better. Smelling floral scents also seem to put us in a good mood and make us feel less anxious. Enhancing the historic district with more flowers adds to the beauty and charm of Taos, and the tourists love them. If half as many visitors to my flower baskets last year were as interested in the art that I had for sale, I'd be a richer man today. Tourists were constantly photographing the flowers in front of my gallery. Please fill up the remaining lampposts with additional hanging baskets. Not only do flowers on the streets add beauty to the area, they have positive psychological payback. Think of them as part of our mental health treatment program." I don't have to obviously convince you guys of the value of flower hanging baskets, because we have a lot in the town, and I understand the initial cost of the baskets is one thing, but maintaining them is probably the biggest stumbling block because of the amount of manpower it takes to water them and fertilize them, but being that we're in such a special year with so many milestones we're celebrating, and how much impact those baskets do have, and how much more beautiful they make the area, having some of the areas without them just seems like we really need to do the best we can to make the town look as beautiful and as lively as possible, and I know we've got a lot of issues with sidewalks and that sort of thing, but this is something that could help, and the tourists really did respond. We had some merchant baskets, which were a separate thing, which Meg will talk about, in front of my gallery last year. Meg actually drove all the way to Colorado and back, fit as many plants as she could in her car for the few people on Kit Carson Road that we could get assembled to participate. And they were just all, really, all day long, we'd be taking pictures of the flowers and just loving them, but it's, you know, and it wasn't something that I really cared about or was noticed that much until I had a business downtown and was around downtown more, and the difference between flower baskets and no flower baskets is pretty stark, so I hope that you guys can figure out a way to do that. We're, not only am I here to ask for that, but, oh, well, also, too, I wanted to mention the art markets that we're having on Kit Carson Road every Saturday. That would go a long way to making that stretch more inviting for people coming out of the plaza. So, but also, the merchants are stepping up to do their part as best as they can. We can address the high brackets on the lampposts for, one, it's, they're high, they're hard to water. A lot of us would do that if we have the ability to do it, but I'll turn it over to Meg, she's from the Garden Club, and we'll talk about the merchant baskets and the progress we're making on that.
Hello to everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I have been working on the flowering hanging baskets for five years, and it was a very difficult thing to get past, but we have the brackets up on the lamppost now, and we finally have it fixed for the last two years, a beautiful flowering baskets that we get from the same supplier that Santa Fe gets them from. They've been beautiful, and it's been a wonderful experience with people who have been up here visiting, who take pictures. As a matter of fact, I ran into someone in Santa Fe, and I said it was from Taos, and this woman, she said, "Oh, those baskets are fabulous," and I said, "Well, thank you," and she pulled out a picture on her phone, and I said, "Oh, my gosh, that is the plaza." So it's been wonderful. We still have enough brackets. We have 50 more lampposts that can be fitted with these 50-pound baskets that we get from the supplier in Colorado. So if, like what David was saying, if there's any way that we could get more baskets up on the lampposts with funding, it would be fabulous, because the areas that don't have the flowers, that haven't had flowers for two years, Bent Street, their lampposts are retrofitted, Placidas in back of the plaza, there are eight lampposts there, and then we also have lampposts down Kit Carson. At this point, we have four baskets at the signal at Kit Carson and the main road, but it's, you know, it would be beautiful if we could have those baskets, but it means that we have to have, Steve would have to have someone, some funding, additional funding to take care of these baskets. So along with that, it's very important that the merchants have beautiful baskets in front of their stores. We tried to work with local nurseries. It seemed as though they were just too expensive, and we ended up, as David said, I went up to Colorado last year and brought back seven merchant baskets in my car, and David had his baskets the whole summer, and then he called me in October and he said, "Meg, are these perennial baskets?" And I said, "No, I don't think so," but they were such a success. So independently, this year, Dolly Peralta, Fred Peralta, is also helping, he's helping with a trailer that he's going to retrofit so that we can help the merchants. We're not going to charge for transportation to and from the nursery in Colorado. We're not going to charge for the food that has to be given to the plants daily. I have spoken with the nursery, they have beautiful baskets for $3,741 per basket, so all the merchants have to do is come up with $3,741, depending on how many baskets they want. We're not charging them for anything else, because it'll make a real statement. Visually, it's exciting, as David was saying, it's exciting to see what we, you know, what's there with the flowers, and people just stop and they take pictures and they talk, and so it would be wonderful to have all of you participate, and we're doing everything we can to get the merchants. David sent out a Facebook note that's part of this, what, three weeks ago?
Yeah, well, actually, the last page shows the list we've got so far of merchants that have committed...
Thirty baskets were ordered by merchants. The only thing that we're requesting is that when we go to pick up the baskets, we have to have a check in hand from the merchant to the supplier, and we'll take care of that, but we're looking forward to really enhancing everything this summer, and I think you'll love it. So thank you.
And I don't know how Councilor Peralta feels, but if you need somebody to pull his trailer and go down for him, I'd volunteer to go get...
Thank you, man.
Do you have another trailer?
But, you know, I'm sure we can work that out. If you need somebody to go down and pick the flowers up, I'd be willing to go down there.
That would be great. Thank you, thank you.
And you said there were 30?
$3,741.
Yeah, and I know...
They're $3,499 a basket, and then they charge tax, and that's it.
And I hate to be outdone, I see Councilor Hahn volunteered two baskets, and I see he's on the list, so I figure I'd better at least help with two baskets, so I feel good for him.
That would be great.
Thank you.
And then we can, you know, use them to hang there in the plaza somewhere. Councilor Hahn, I mean, Councilor Cantu?
I put flowers on my property for years, which I paid for myself, and one time I did, I think through Taos Project, got some flowers. By any chance, what kind of flowers are they? Do you have pictures?
They're flowers that don't have to be deadheaded, and the interesting thing of it is that these baskets are already, they were planted in February, so before we get them here in town, they will have been growing for four months. Also, the, well, the other merchant baskets, I'm the one who actually gave you those...
Yeah.
Yes, to support. The baskets that will be coming in this year from Bayfield are so full, you don't, you don't, you don't see the basket. The worst thing in the world is to see plastic. And I will say that the Garden Club planted baskets that, this was four years ago, we planted baskets at Ace Hardware, took care of the baskets every day for two months, put the baskets up on the lampposts, and they were in these plastic containers, and they were horrible. So they were taken down after a month and a half. I think it was a real fiasco, but now that we're using this supplier from Colorado, it's just, it's, you know, they don't have to be deadheaded. When the town waters them, they feed them, and they never have to deadhead them, they just shake them, and they're beautiful colors, there's, you know, there are all kinds of colors, and this supplier actually has, of the merchant baskets that we are going to be ordering, 7,500 of just merchant baskets in their inventory.
Wow.
It's about 10,000 square feet of a covered, it's a canopy, just incredible nursery.
Are they the little tiny flowers?
They're... They're different, yes.
They seem to be some kind of petunia hybrid.
They're planted, they're planted in February, and they don't, they don't reproduce, I mean, they reproduce it all summer, and that's it.
They use sterile starts.
They're sterile starts.
I see. Yeah, well.
So we're dealing with a company that's very artistic, very professional, and they supply flowers all over. They really do. And they're the ones who supply all the big baskets in Santa Fe. And I'm sure all of you have seen those. Yes, have you?
Of course.
You haven't?
No junkets.
No junkets. Well, they're incredible because they're 50 pounds apiece, these baskets. And they're up high enough, when we designed the brackets to go up on the lamppost, by code, they're up high enough so that people can walk underneath. And they're sturdy, and they're proportionally, they look great, you know. They're up there, and they look smaller than they actually are, but they look proportionate to what the lampposts are.
So the merchant baskets would be hanging under people's portals and places like that? And the larger baskets that we hope the town can fill up the rest of the lampposts with would complement that really nicely and make the whole street?
Like with your posters and things that David has, you know, on Kit Carson. Everything is orchestrated, so it's, it all fits together.
Let's include edible gardens all over, too.
That would be good, too. That's another product.
Coachman Peralta? So how many more baskets are you talking about?
Thirty.
Thirty more baskets that the town would provide?
And I did call-
Would be at the same price, 37?
Yes. No, no. The big baskets for the lampposts are $99. They don't charge tax or anything. We have 42 baskets on hold with this nursery until we go to pick them up, when Steve sends whomever goes up there to pick, the elves go up. But they cannot hold the other 30 baskets. I've already been in contact with them. They said that they have a lot of people who just come in. So if we do find that we can get the money for this, then we would figure out a way of just going up, picking them up, and getting them as quickly as we could. And we're trying to get them, I'm assuming, before Memorial Day.
Okay. Thank you.
A question from our youth council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may have missed this detail, just for the sake of clarification. Who maintains and waters these baskets all summer?
The town.
The town, well, okay.
The town does. And we've had great people who've been trained.
But the girls still there?
No, they're not here.
They went retired.
And the merchants maintain their own baskets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else on the Citizens Forum? I saw you on your alternative mode of transportation today.
Well, keep pushing it. I expect to see you on one.
I ride all the time.
Good for you.
Yeah. They have that bicycle awareness or alternative transportation a day, and I can't remember if it's in, I believe it's the first part of June, and they have that bicycle ride just short from Kate Taos to the other end of town. So I'd love to see you there.
Every day we should be out there. And I have a comment about bicycles, as well as this beginning comment. During this morning's meeting, there was some concern expressed about visitors with upset stomachs because of food violations at some local hotels, hotel properties. And it was suggested, and I hope it's in the works, to have a meeting with the hotel owners, not the operators, to discuss whatever those problems were. When that meeting occurs, I hope very much that there will be discussion about water use at the hotel properties. If I'm going to be upset, I'm going to be upset about the use of water in the community. I don't know how the properties are outfitted, but I know in the few occasions that I've been in hotels, that they often have these single-handle operating mechanism that, to get to hot water, you've got to go all the way through cold. It's just one handle, and you just push it up, and you push it down, and you find the mix that you like. They are incredibly wasteful, astonishingly so, shamefully so. You can't mix the water the way you want to, using hot and cold left and right. Rather, you have to use this single pivot mix. And if you've ever noticed, the volume of water that comes out of them, it's just amazing, just an amazing waste. So I'd like that topic discussed. If you sit and talk with these owners, ask what they can do to replace them. And ultimately, if nothing else, I'd like to see an ordinance considered to regulate commercial use of water in the hotel restrooms, bathrooms, in the bath, in the low-flow toilets, low-flow showerheads. It's nice to have a low-flow showerhead, but it's better to have, or it's good also to have, to get away with these single pivot handles. So I hope very much that that topic of water use will be discussed. And as to the bicycles, I was down at the agricultural building this past weekend, bicycling in that area, and I noticed that there's this sort of fitful start to the Salazar Road extension, which I believe is misguided. And the road, I'll say the S-to-S extension, I don't know what it's going to be called, but that road from that point at the agricultural building up to New Mexico 68 is oddly striped, oddly in the sense that the center yellow stripe doesn't run down the center of the road. It runs to one side. There is, on the north side of the road, what I am assuming is a bicycle lane, striped as such. It's about three or four, maybe five, feet wide. On the south side of the road, there's a lane, there's a stripe there, and the lane is about 12 inches wide. Now, if that's meant to be a bicycle lane, that's shameful. Don't put in stripes that mislead people, both bicyclists and motorists, the idea that this is where the bicycle is supposed to be. That's wrong. It's better to have no stripe there than to have a stripe like that. It's misleading. And if that's the case, if that's what it's meant to be, a bicycle lane, then I would like very much to have that stripe removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under Citizens Forum? Okay? If not, we'll go ahead on to our consent agenda. There's been two items removed from that. What is the wishes on the council on the rest of the items on the consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda as modified.
Second?
Second.
Yep. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No discussion. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Okay. Thank you. So then, we had two items that were pulled up. So we have item A, use of the Taos Plaza, Taos Plaza Live. And if we want to, Mr. Bellis or Susan, if we want to restate this, this is basically just for the consideration, the approval of the use of the park for Taos Plaza Live on Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:00, throughout the summer from May 28th through September 3rd, excluding July 16th, and on July 5th from 1:00 to 3:00 for a special performance by the 531st Air Force Band. This does, as far as closing of the plaza, the only day that you're requesting for closure of the plaza, or maybe there's not a closure of the plaza, or a partial closure of the plaza on that specific day of July 5th. Okay? Council, what's your wishes? I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion. Counselor Cantu?
I just can't give my approval on any kind of closure. And I would like some conditions set that the plaza not be closed, and no beer garden. For further discussion.
At this portion, there is no beer garden. That's not on the table, council. That's why I want to make sure specifically what we're after. The only closure was for that, a partial closure on that particular day. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Susan?
If you'll come up to the mic, just so Counselor Gonzalez can hear you also, because it's being livestreamed.
Thank you for hearing me again. I think that having the 531st Air Force Band on that Sunday with as much embellishment as we can put with it would be great. However, if it's going to get an up or down vote for use of the plaza because of the closure, maybe we withdraw the request to close any road on the plaza for that day. You know, I personally don't think closing those two roads for a few hours on Sunday afternoon to provide for the safety of the community, for families who'd like to attend and would have small children. By limiting the road access to just those two roads, parents and families could probably have a better time thinking, "Well, if we stay in this corner, we're going to be safe because there's not going to be any traffic here." But if it's, you can't hold the event at all because you want to close those two roads, then I would take closing those two roads off the table to be allowed to present this event to the community.
So at this time, there's a motion to move forward with that closure for that portion of time, and there was a second to it. So there is concern by Counselor Cantu about the closure. So Counselor Peralta, under discussion.
Do you know how many members in the band?
Forty-five to 50.
So they won't fit on the gazebo?
They have before. This is the same band that was here two summers ago, or was it three? When we did the parade, and then the band was here, and we did get them up on the gazebo in rows. And it was probably three rows of 15 across on the chairs. And then they did, you know, some breakout where the brass section came down onto the bricks and played, and they had the singer, who was so great.
What was the attendance?
Eight hundred.
At least 800. It was one of the best attended. And it was actually the Fourth of July? Yeah. It was a Thursday, Fourth of July.
I remember.
So, and then, of course, the town of Taos had the fireworks afterwards. So there was like a whole series of things that had happened that day to celebrate, and that was just one piece of it.
Did we have a closure for that?
Excuse me. Good afternoon. I'm Lindsay. I also work for the Taos County Chamber of Commerce. Susan and I are two staff. I just wanted to also remind you all about the trucks as well with the 44th Army Band. Is that right?
531st.
Sorry, I'm mixing the two because we've had a couple. They bring in big trucks with all their men, so that can also be a safety issue, too. So again, we advise, for safety reasons, to close just a part of the plaza due to the amount of the band and also their trucks. And so that's another factor.
So we did close it before?
No.
So how did you handle it, then?
Very carefully. We had to line everybody up, and again, I think it is, it can be a hardship for safety because, you know, our town of Taos, thank you, but at the same time, the people on staff who are patrolling, there's only so many eyes and whatnot. So the trucks had to come in a line, and we had to move them down. But again, when you have big trucks, you cannot see visually what's going on behind them or in front, and so that can be a safety issue.
So after they unloaded, were they moved from the plaza?
No. We kept them in the line.
You know, much as the beer trucks line up along North Plaza, when they come in to just, you know, provide service to their customers, they line up on the inside of the plaza on that street. You know, so there's parking, there's the angle parking on the north side, and they line up straight along the pedestrian area of the plaza.
But the transportation of the band, we did have to move their bus because it was too large, correct? But again, we just lined them up on the back end, right behind the gazebo.
So in this case, you would be moving those trucks from the north side to the south
We could do that.
Because otherwise, it doesn't do any good to leave those trucks on the north side and clear the plaza.
Right. And especially if the traffic were open on that north side and west side. We'd want to have clear visuals for everybody who is traveling through there.
Are those military trucks?
They were like white panel trucks.
Moving trucks.
And they had, you know, all of the instruments. The band has their own chairs and music stands, and those trucks are outfitted to move these bands from location to location.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to crystallize, is there a major concern with the closure other than Councilwoman Cantu's concern with interruption to the vendors on the plaza?
I think there's safety. Chief, did you want to address?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As always, whenever we start getting more and more people inside the plaza, my big concern really is for the kids and trying to keep the kids contained, and for the pedestrian flow as well. I do know, the last time I had a military band in there, they had a number of their larger trucks, and that did turn to be a little bit of an issue as far as positioning them and also the side alignment. And it's, you know, I'm paid to look at the worst-case scenario, and so these bands have a tendency to attract a lot of people. So for that, I normally like to err on the side of caution.
Thank you. And when we're talking about, just so everybody's clear, we're talking about the south side or north side. Basically, those trucks would then be moved in front of the gorge, is that, in that area?
Yes.
And before, they were put in front of, what's the eye glass?
Say the Taos Co-op.
Okay.
Yeah, not the eye glass shop because the other Taos Plaza Live bands were already on that street. Because I think we had, you know, Aiden with the sound engineering, plus we had a pre-band before that military band.
Okay. All right. Any additional, we're under discussion, any other discussion? Counselor Cantu?
Which sides are the ones that are going to be closed again? Two sides?
The two sides would be south and east.
In front of the gorge and the La Fonda?
Yes.
Those two sections. And 800 people approximately last time they were here?
You know, I think, you know, we say 800 per Taos Plaza Live. My guess is for that military band, it was probably more- My guess is for that military band, it was probably more like a thousand to twelve hundred.
That was your biggest one yet?
It's close. There are several Taos Plaza Live bands that have big draws. Grupo Mascal had probably an equal draw when they played.
That's a lot of people, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, we do have a motion, a second on the floor, under further discussion. Any further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Con Two?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Okay. So, then the next item was use of the Taos Plaza for the Taste of Taos. And this is consideration and possible approval for the use of Taos Plaza on Sunday, October 11th, 2015, for the Taste of Taos event. Again, this is an event that will, again, will the plaza be closed for this event? You sounded like it didn't have to be. Can we do it without it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would suggest that we give tentative approval for that date for Taos Plaza, to Taste of Taos, and then have the Chamber of Commerce get together with the plaza merchants and work out any issues that they may have, and then come back to us with a complete program, including, if you wanted to have a wine tasting, those people who would be interested in doing that. And then we can put together a program, including the town's participation in that.
Is that in a form of a motion, councilor?
It is.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I think the town ourselves are long overdue in having a meeting with the merchants on the plaza only. And I'd really appreciate it if the town would speak with the merchants. And it not only has to do with this, Taste of Taos, but Farmers Market as well because everybody else has always been included. And the merchants themselves that are in the immediate plaza haven't had their own personal meeting. And they're the ones most affected by everything on the plaza. And I just really think the town needs to take that initiative to talk to them, the merchants on the plaza themselves. This is going to be another closure on Sunday, one of the farmers markets on a Saturday. And that's just how I feel about this. They need to be included.
Thank you, Councilor Con Two.
I'll modify my motion to include the town and the Chamber of Commerce meeting with the merchants.
I'll second the modification.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Con Two?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for all your efforts. And thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to those events.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Go on to matters from staff.
Mayor, real quick, before you all move on to that, I'm about to walk into a meeting, so I'm going to have to get off. But thank you for including me on this meeting.
Thank you, and have a safe trip.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
You, too.
Matters from staff, other matters, if there's any? If not, we'll go establishment of a Taos Tree Board, Steve?
Yes, sir.
And these are trees that are left standing.
Hang on just a second. Good afternoon, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. I'm here this afternoon to talk about the establishment of a tree board for the Town of Taos. Checked at the request of Mr. Bellis with the town clerk to see if there ever was a tree board established officially or if there was one in existence now. And there is not. There are ten other towns in the state of New Mexico that do have tree boards. And we'd like to, a group of very concerned and very, amazingly, very educated and experienced people involved with trees got together, we had two meetings in February, just trying to form the basis of establishing a tree board. Now, just a little background, too, is the Town of Taos, for the last five years, has received the recognition from the National Arbor Foundation as a Tree City USA. And there are only eight other towns in New Mexico that have that designation. And we just got the award, and I'll pass it around here to you now. So, in addition to that, we have, for the last three years consecutively, gotten a growth award from the National Arbor Foundation. So, the folks in this town are very big into trees and the urban canopy that's here. I support it completely. I'll be the, if this works out, the liaison for the board, for the town government. I assume you all saw the draft resolution? Was that part of the agenda items? So, what we did was kind of Google around and did some research on the formation and the structure of a board. And what we're proposing is a nine-member board that serves two-year terms, all volunteer, not paid. And their primary duty is to be technical advisors for the town government and for the public, to advise on things like what type of trees to plant, what, we intend, through the tree survey, we have a state forestry grant to do a tree survey in the historic district. We have already had one grant where we did a survey of the trees in Kit Carson Park. So, we're billing on that survey. And what they want to do is, after the survey, put together a urban forestry plan. And the tree board will then help ensure that plan is implemented. So, we have nine people already who are ready to volunteer. Among them are Mr. Paul Bryan Jones, who's the town consulting arborist. He's also the chairman of the New Mexico Urban Forestry Council. There's a gentleman from New Mexico State University here in Taos who's got a doctorate in forestry. We have Roberta Salazar, who's with Rivers and Birds. And so, we have a wide range of people who are ready to volunteer and get going. I would like to ask, if I could, that we finalize the resolution that I provided to you and bring it back to the next council meeting and approve it. And I will pass around to you the members of the community that want to be board members. The alternative, that is, as Mr. Bellis suggested to me, is that we put out a press release and an ad in the paper and solicit volunteers from the community. That would work, and these people will volunteer. But the folks who have come forward so far are just amazingly qualified. And we could get started sooner if we are allowed to do that.
And Councilman Peralta?
I just have one suggestion, that it not be a two-year term, but that you have to start off with two-year and three-year terms. And so, that you have some...
So, it's staggered?
Staggered in order to keep some expertise and knowledge about what the tree board is doing coming into every time you replace members because
Right.
You know, the nine members aren't going to be there for the rest of their lives, in particular if you put in a term limitation to it. I don't know that you have, but I'm just saying.
No, we didn't consider a term limitation. But we did consider staggered terms, but starting it up, we weren't really sure the best way to do that. But I think a two- and three-year term may work. And we do also, so two positions on the board would be youth positions. We're very concerned in getting young people involved in urban forestry and in trees. So, there are two members from Taos High School that have agreed to serve. And they're part of the, Taos High School has an urban forestry program, surprisingly. And they are students that are involved in that program.
Steve, thank you. I think this is long overdue. I think it's one of them things. This will kind of look over the health of some of our existing stand of trees. And I think it's great, you know. I would just recommend, you know, that if the council, you know, you ask for a council, but I don't think it's a good idea for a council member to sit on a lot of, any of these boards. Because if you're coming back for funding or you're coming back for anything, then we'd have to vote on it. It's not a good idea, I don't think. I mean, I talked to our procurement, and there's issues with that. So, it's great for us to recommend somebody to be on that board. But I don't think it's appropriate for us, one of us, to sit on that board.
We have nine members now, Mayor, that are willing to go.
Thank you. And I appreciate it. I think this is something that's long overdue. And thank you. Hopefully, we can get some replacement trees and, because some of those are in their, I follow the, I guess, to follow their season, if you want to call it, because they're on their way out. But thank you. Councilman Han?
Thank you, Mr. Kennebeck. So, Judge Jeffrey Shannon has expressed to me on numerous occasions his desire to be involved in tree planting here in Taos. I don't know when I'll see Jeff again, but every time I see him, he just says one word, trees, trees, trees. So...
I've got just the thing for him. So, that's a good segue. April 24th is Arbor Day in the Town of Taos. And the mayor and the superintendent of schools are going to officiate at the Enos Garcia. They're planting an orchard. He's welcome to come. They're going to plant a ton of trees, of fruit trees. And the mayor and the superintendent are going to plant trees to commemorate Arbor Day, which is part of our requirement for the Tree City USA designation, as is a tree board. I'll get this to you.
What time is that at?
It is April 12th, from noon to two. So, over here at the Taos Municipal School Buildings, where they redo in Parfield, there will be a very large fruit orchard put in. They're going to try to get the kids involved.
You said 24th, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You said 2012th this time, and you said 24th before.
Did I?
Yeah.
It's April 24th, from noon to two. And I'll pass around, I have this flyer electronically. And I don't know, Mr. Bellis, we put it up on the website yet? So, it's on the town website as well. So, the public is invited. There'll be trees and seedlings to give away to kids to plant. So, the mayor will do a proclamation, as we did last year. So, there's an opportunity for the judge to come plant trees.
Excuse me, Mayor, council. I just wanted to tell Steve that if you send it to me, I can put it on Facebook as well.
What was that, Renee?
I just told Steve that if he sent me the information on this tree planting, that I can add it to Facebook as well to inform the public.
It's up all over the place. There's a number of sponsors. Rivers and Birds is one of the sponsors, the Town of Taos, the Taos Tigers, and the Hartwood Coalition, which is a coalition of people who are tree experts here in Taos. They've come out of the woodwork.
I know.
Yeah. Youth council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kennebeck, oftentimes, for these sorts of affairs, I'm a step behind, so I wasn't involved in the preliminary discussions. Can you just briefly tell me what the duties of a tree board are?
Uh-huh. I have that here. So, as we will, we put it in the draft resolution, the duties of a tree board will consist of the following, and excuse me for reading it. Attend to the needs of trees and their associated human, plant, wildlife, and soil communities through education and outreach, through sponsoring and coordinating tree plantings and maintenance, and through advocacy and advertisement, excuse me, advisement to local governments and other agencies. So, I'll get you, if you didn't get it, the draft resolution.
I haven't seen a copy of that, man.
I'll give you this one, actually.
Thank you.
Now, Steve, that might be something I consider if you was adding a youth member so that there's something... Yes, there's two youth members on the nine-member board. They're very concerned on trying to push this to the next generation and get young people involved in the trees in our town.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, does this require a approval, then?
Well, if you'll approve the draft resolution now, then we can just, what, bring it to the next meeting or just?
We just bring it to the next meeting for approval.
Okay. Approval, for final approval. If you have any edits to it, please get them to me. And along with that, I'll supply you with the list of volunteers.
Okay. Councilman Peralta?
Along with that resolution, you should have some bylaws.
Okay.
As to how the tree board itself is going to operate.
Oh, it's governed and operated, okay.
So, that should be incorporated into the resolution.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'll have that.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
So, next, number 12, Town Manager's Report. Did you have anything else to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two things. One is, I know Councilman Peralta had asked at the last meeting about two maps being posted on the net. And if you go to the planning tab on the website, go to the dropdown, all the way to the bottom, Town Maps, both of those maps are on there now.
Okay. They weren't there last week, but I'll look again.
Yeah, they were, I think the link was broken because they had put them up, but for some reason, I couldn't find it on there either. So, I had her add a whole, an additional tab at the bottom when we pull it down now.
All right. Thank you.
And then, Steve, did you want to address the issue in regards to, particularly since we discussed the anti-donation issue? I support Steve's position on this, that since we are not in the convention center of business anymore, the rental of rooms for weddings or private citizen events, other than for the use of public meetings or government agencies, financially, just doesn't seem to make sense. But I'm not too sure we could do it. Well, the request specifically is to cease nighttime and weekend functions here. And generally, they are social in nature, they're baby showers. And it's a nice thing. But there are, as you said earlier, there's private businesses in town that host those kind of venues. And we are considerably undercutting them with our rate. But even at that, last year, we had 63 such events, and it ended up costing us over $5,000 in overtime utilities. We passed this around, did this make it to the council agenda?
Well, that's part of the concern that we have over the anti-donation clause, is that if we're undercutting, then we're not charging the proper rent for the use of those facilities on weekends or evenings. So, either up the rate or we discontinue it. And I think your recommendation is that we discontinue.
Yes, sir. It would be. Because... Steve, I do support you on that, but I don't support the idea that just cut all meetings. I think that these rooms are very often used by DOT for our service, a lot of organizations that No, no. It serves a public function. We still want to make that available. That's true. On those occasions where it's a weekend or an evening, but quite often... Those are pretty rare, though. It's usually a business type of situation, so it's Monday through Friday during the business day that we have. We have the forestry service in here, we have a number of government agencies, we have AARP that does safe driving for seniors. And those events during the day, we can support easily. It's just, it takes away from the staff here. If we have to do a nighttime or weekend event, I either have to pay them overtime or have to give them comp time, and then I lose them during the week. And, you know, if it's just 12 people here for a baby shower, I've got a guy here for six hours, it's just kind of counterproductive.
And Steve, I hate to put you on the spot, but, you know, I was going to do under manners, I mean, under my report, but, you know, we're getting a little bit of slack on, you know, we didn't renew a contract for some particular restrooms.
Correct.
And, again, I guess, the thing on the internet said, "Town closes restrooms." I don't think it...
Right.
We didn't close a restroom.
Well, it's not on the internet. It's a sign on the door at the museum. Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, I mean, you just, I know, me and you met with them.
Right.
You know, we asked them, is there something we can do to work together on these, instead of it, you know, is there anything that we can do? And I did put it out there, if there was something that we can work together on, maybe we can relook at it. But at this point, you know, we did not renew that contract.
Right.
But just so everybody knows, if you're getting any slack, and we voted on it here, so...
All right. So, is a 10-year lease? Kit Carson Museum?
Yeah.
Right. There's a 10-year lease on the restrooms, and we, the council voted just to not renew the lease.
All right. Just so...
Okay. So, the, is, do we need a decision on the civic center hours or no?
Well, we can't do it at this point.
Okay.
Is something you want to bring back for direction?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we were just asking for consent, consensus, that normally, the hours of staff, other than the fee schedule, anything dealing with this is really set by the staff typically.
It's administrative action.
So, unless there's any other objection, we will continue to make the rooms available for government entities and public meetings. During the business meeting. Appropriate to the functions of the town, but not for social occasions and private rentals. And we'll make that effective. We need to get notice out to people, so we'll put something on the website, something on Facebook, post it on the building, give people at least... First of the next month, first of May?
Well, if there's somebody that's already booked with you, you don't want to cancel those.
No, actually, we don't. I don't think there's any booked now.
But we don't want to push it back too soon, or we're gonna get a lot of weddings coming up here in May.
Yeah, okay. How about the first of May?
Graduation, so...
Actually, we don't get, we used to get graduation parties, but it was for Rio Grande and Baton Halls. These rooms are too small.
Way too small.
All right.
If we get it out this week.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Two weeks' notice to the public.
Very well.
Thank you. Anything else on the, thank you, Steve, anything else under the Town Manager's Report? Nothing else, Rick?
May I?
I don't have anything.
I'll...
John?
Go ahead, I'll allow it. Come for it.
John Hamilton with Lilac Festival, and we're coming close to...
Come up and...
Excuse me. John Hamilton with the Lilac Festival, and we're coming close to our advertising deadlines to place our ads in Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and Los Alamos. We submitted a proposal to the town, and just, if there was a consideration of approval, or it was going to be required at the council, I just didn't want to miss this opportunity for it to have been considered. And I apologize if I'm out of order and hadn't had a chance to discuss this before the meeting.
It's all right. Early in our meeting this morning, we did discuss some of these entities that were coming forward, that are trying to meet their deadline right now. And we have put something in place, so, you know...
Okay. We'll be in touch with you in 48 hours.
Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Did you have something else, Steve?
Actually, John, could you just go? I didn't do it. Unless it was good, then we did do it as good.
Very briefly, I just wanted to make sure the council and mayor knew that the, I approached the Lilac Festival folks, we're gonna replant the beds, the existing beds in the Juan Largo to Ersean Lane area, because it's just been overgrown and untended. We ripped a bunch of stuff out. I contacted John and Tom Wheeler, and they're gonna, the Lilac Festival is gonna donate and plant 20 lilac bushes into that area, so the town doesn't have to buy the plants. We're very thankful for that.
Keep towns purple.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's our pleasure.
Anything else, Rick?
I guess, just, I hadn't thought of it, but just along those lines, that the Lilac Festival folks, and then Steve, and we, some of us had had a discussion, too, about working with the TCA to revitalize what used to be called the Lilac Garden, so just outside of Kit Carson Park. The wall has a small break, and if you go in there, there are some concrete seats, and it's kind of suffered from neglect in the past, and some people have said it's kind of a dark place, that people hang out and drink or do other things. So it's part of that whole refurbishing of going along the park. Now, that does belong to TCA, so we are gonna have to come back to you with a proposal to work with them.
Councilman Peralta?
Along those lines, Mr. Mayor, you reminded me, I had asked for a report from the TCA on the auditorium and the liquor license. And I would hope that we could get that soon, because it's been a long time in coming. We haven't actually had a report from them since we gave them the liquor license. I'd like to see how they're doing, and if the liquor license is performing the way we hoped it would, to keep them solvent.
It's our facility, and it's our license, so that's the reason we need to get an annual, we should be getting an annual report from them anyway. Thank you, Council.
I'll get that report right away, Council.
And also on their contract.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Peralta, I am the executive vice president of Taos Center for the Arts, and I could speak to that now if you would like, or we can schedule a report at the next council meeting.
We should have a formal report.
Yeah, formal report.
We'll do it.
Thank you. Thank you. So anything else, Rick?
No, thank you.
Okay. The only matter I have from the mayor's office is that we, the NCRTD board met, and it was unanimous that they move forward if, and they will bring a contract or the appropriate paperwork for approval of the, I want to say, combination resolution to put the NCRTD and the Chili Line together. So that'll be coming here probably at our next meeting. So that's the only thing that I had to report. Matters from the council?
I have a couple of comments.
Please.
Okay. I was wondering if we could put it on our list to get a homeowners, neighborhood associations list compiled. I've been working on the yard sale that I'm trying to propose for August 1st and 2nd, and there's not really, it's really hard to contact. And I got a list from the county, because they have a list, and I just feel like the town also needs to put a list together if there's anything.
Is there a list of, I don't think we have any.
I think that Renee just responded to you, that the only homeowners association we're aware of is the Foothills Neighborhood Association, which is half in the county, half in the town.
Yeah.
It's the only one we have on record. I should say neighborhood association, I'm sorry. But Diana just made a search, and we don't have any HOA's homeowners associations recorded, as far as I know. But we will double-check on that.
Okay. And I was hoping maybe we could, as a council, everybody get an email as far as signage for the farmer's market, what is in cement that you guys have, you know, kind of formalized to let us know what's going on in all the different areas of farmer's market, buses?
Yeah. We were waiting sort of for today on the question of the whole lease and what we're gonna do with that, but we should be able to resolve that shortly. And in fact, even without the signage, the tour bus area is being used by the tour buses, they seem to have found it. But we will get permanent signage up.
Yeah, I've heard that. And then Conrad, he's not here, huh? I had asked last time about the cameras, if he had spoken with Kit Carson Electric to get a price from them.
I, you know, that he had copied me on two emails and had not yet gotten a response yet, and he has asked Councilman Gonzalez if the councilman could put in a connection for him, but I know the councilman's been out of town.
Okay, well, that's all I had to bring up today.
Councilman Peralta? Nothing? Councilman Hahn? Nothing? Okay. We have an executive session, we have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And a second.